All right, Harry, can you hear us?
Yes, I can.
Randy and
All right, I'm gonna pause. I'll call to order this second meeting of Wabashaw City Council. And just so we don't make Joe any more uncomfortable, he already is a recognition This isn't a barbershop quartet or a kickoff line, I'm gonna be very disappointed.
Joe, please stand up. Stand up. Joe is celebrating 21 years of service with the city of Wabashaw. And fun fact, he started before he was legally allowed to drink. So that's amazing. Say a few words if you don't mind, or however you plan.
Thank you very much, guys. Joe? They have a lot of selling stories. They're having to tell me. I truly think the city of Wabashaw is watching as Joe starts his career. He needs to treat security and everyone comes a positive with integrity, compassion, empathy. It's an honor, work for Joe. I think I speak for the entire department and say that there's no one else who'd rather work.
Well, that's great.
Thank you so much, guys. I will speak on some of the quotes that I got from some of the officers. Sergeant Wagner here credits Chief Stark for keeping him here in Wabashaw. And he said that Joe has always been fair and keeps the department professional and a fun place to work. And he has taught a ton in his career and has a wealth of knowledge. And under his leadership, the department has grown and thrived. And then from Officer Jacobs, Joe is the kind of chief every city should have. He cares about his staff and will do anything to make the work environment a better place. So congratulations, Joe, on your 21 years of service. And we're really proud to just celebrate your tenure. So, thank you.
All right. Do we have any guest speakers planned? I don't
Yeah, I have more to do later, but we'll do those after that.
Okay, sounds good. So we'll take public comment at this time. If you've never been here before, please, we welcome you to the podium so we can see and hear you better. Just state your name and place of residence for the record and then share anything that you'd like to share with council. We try to keep the comments brief and then we won't necessarily respond in this time. But if you have any questions that come up, we can always direct staff to help us respond. Welcome, Laurel.
Hi, everyone, I'm Laurel. I'm here to introduce myself, but I'm a candidate for Minnesota House District One A. I live at the FL and North Canada. I live in Red Wing and I'm a member of the Red Wing City Council. I was having a review of you at the conference last week. I'm just here to observe and to learn what issues people are talking about in Wabashaw. Let's try to get up to speed as I continue on my journey to try to do that. I'm happy to stay active in the evening if anybody has anything specific they want to talk to me about. And to finish off, I do want to extend my thanks to the officer and the enforcement for the assistance they provided to my team in the parade on Saturday. It was much appreciated and everybody there wanted to want to say thank you.
Thank you. Please feel free to stay, or if you have to go, we understand. You're welcome to stay or just our lovely pool. All right, any other public comments? Heather?
I'm here to say a little bit of a question on where's the same city crew and who worked on Riverboat Days. I had relatives and in-laws that came from northern Minnesota down to experience it and they loved it. They're ready to make the plan for next year. And I have cousins that were in the car show for this year and then started last year. But they had a question because they've been watching Facebook with all the changes going on here in Wabashaw, with the road construction coming. And they're wondering what's gonna happen to the car show next year. Because it used to be the football field, they didn't really like bringing their 1960 cars to that type of they liked, they didn't come for a few years. And when they heard last year was back on the city streets, they came and he brought some other ones with his car club this year. So I'm hoping the city is working with during this road construction project how to keep Riverboat Days continuing going into next year and having the same sort of availability for those car shows as well as music underneath the bridge and other events. And a question I have too, this million dollar question, with the road construction, and I know I said earlier, you can't answer all the questions, but will there be some plan put out to everyone in the city? Where the people that are currently parking, where the construction's gonna happen? Where those vehicles are gonna go? So we know that, you know, I hope they don't all end up on Bailey and Second Street. You know, and we don't have a place to park. I'm hoping there's some backup plans for the people that are using the city parking lots for the library and those that where they can move their cars to that's not gonna impact their other streets as much with the ready to traffic. So if they consider that. And last but not least, maybe you can ask the amount of cattle is gonna be done? Is it up to St. Felix's Church? Or is it just up to the platform park?
It's in the project map and it's not all the way to St. Felix's, it's the second, the end of second.
The platform park is over.
Fourth Grant, excuse me. So the project map has that, that's really clear in the project map. Yeah, the other questions, you'll get a little bit of an answer, but as you heard me say, as you heard me say to Katie.
But I just wanted to say that I really, you know, my cousins and mother, they really enjoyed it, so.
Yeah, because the first thing I thought of as soon as things calmed down was, oh, these successful planners are gonna wanna know what's on for next year. I'm sure they're dissecting everything.
My cousin with this car club is making plans of where they're going next year already. And he's like, we just kinda wanna know, we'd like to come back, but it could be, you know. It's not like, hey, thank you guys, keep up the good
I was told that it's gonna be on Second Street.
It's right in front of the house.
Well, in front of the city.
Okay, okay.
But I don't know if that's the case.
I'm sure they haven't totally bought it.
Right in front of the house, okay, that's right.
All right, thank you. Any other public comments? I saw some of them jump up, please join us.
Dean, how you doing? Dean, when it was Dave's Saturday, 22 Main Street, number two. Very concerned about the assessments and how it's gonna go. The very first rollout of this, I was literally told by the person from Bolden Mac. As he patted me on the back, don't worry, brother, okay, you got 35,000. That was his exact words. I'm hearing different numbers. There has been lawyers involved in this saying that that's not regal. I would like to know what realistic numbers are we can honestly anticipate now I am treating this stuff. I just want that basically, whatever, what do we, what can we really realistically anticipate? And are we doing what is nice or are we doing what is the I got, there's 1930 types, I heard. We're talking almost 100 years of stuff and not being in and are paying for it, it's just this poor group of people being obsessed. To me, that's very irresponsible, you know, for the past year, not you folks, but for the past year. That's pretty irresponsible to put 100 years or 90 years, excuse me, worth of neglect on a hand for you.
That's not right.
I keep getting that, but
There's gonna be a presentation later on the news.
Sorry, I'm sorry, that's awesome. Because it's like, right now, the number I was given, literally, as I added me on the back, was 35,000. And who's gonna get me down with that?
Well, it's not a negotiation, it's a formula. And if you go back to last, there, that's the scope of MAP. So if you go back Yep, if you go back to last month's city council meeting, you'll hear Katie's presentation on how the formula works. We don't have the exact numbers now, but that formula, working toward that formula is the process. So it won't be a negotiation, it won't be something you can get you to what you want. It's gonna be, it'll be the formula as described in that last presentation. It's not a straight, super easy to describe process.
No, no, Pope Justice, my first time in city hall. I'm retired military, so I found all over the world. This is my first time actually living here. I've lived here now on Main Street for two years, a lot of places about 10 years ago, just to bring my boat down. I was one of those annoying boat people in the middle of the place. Want to say this, I'll do, Chief, your department is phenomenal. And I'm a retired cop, I'm probably retired from the military, retired from the Alps. I tell people all the time, you, you guys are there, you know, mess with people, they're not stupid and a lot of small towns. I got through Plainville, and I'm not driving 20 miles an hour to tell them to blow over, it's pretty annoying. Anyway, thank you, you guys are doing a job and obviously there are questions under the But no, it's, it's important that you get a number. Because that being said, I'm a retired cop, I'm a retired soldier, and I am on very fixed income and I need to start planning. And for the guy that began that in the back and said, don't worry, I'll work with you, I've been here, but
I don't know who that was, but
The guy in Bolden Mac
Pick her up or pick her
I will. But the last time I was here, I was told this same person worked for the city of Wabashaw. The last meeting I was at. And I felt that was kind of a sucker punch, that one, no one from the media, the city showed up. And two, the guy putting it out only had a Bolden Mac shirt or tag. So here I am thinking, you did, brother, you're gonna get all the money you want, you're, 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 you get whatever you get. I'm stuck with your bill, I'm patting you on the back and saying, don't worry, 30,000. And then, that's times two, because I just bought another place in that, I need a place in Wabashaw. The last thing I was told, I am now at $60,000. That's what I was told.
That's not correct.
That's what the conversation had, which is what I was told.
Then you're getting this information. Come to your council numbers.
There you are.
Yeah. We're, we're, we're in a process, we're in a process, if it's not Yep, that's not at that point, but we can answer that question, but that's inaccurate. So just stick with us, it's gonna be a long public process, we'd like to have you here at every step. There's gonna be future public meetings tonight, you'll hear us look at a feasibility report and we're just on this rather plodding path toward the project.
And I'm not here, I'm watching, I mean, I really do. It's like last week we were in South Dakota burying my father and so, so I'll watch the meetings, so I do get this.
Yeah, thank you. Any other public comments?
I'll give you a couple of ones, sorry.
Hi, Brenda.
Hello. Brenda Pearson, 136 Bridge Avenue. And here mainly just to keep encouraging the discussion and what is happening with the short-term rentals. Because more and more, there's homes going down for sale, people are buying them that don't live here. And lo and behold, they're turned into another Airbnb or VRBO. So I appreciate the, the work, a couple of things. How are we gonna make sure that they have a health license? How are we gonna make sure that their property taxes are not residential and/or saying they live there, but making sure that they're commercial, because that's what they are? And how are we gonna do get all the current short-term rentals compliant? So is there gonna be laws on the books that says that you don't comply with everything? We're going to do this. I haven't heard of any of that, so just wondering. And that just stems back to the time seven years ago when the first Airbnb was approached, sued by the city. The city won, but he still never became compliant. Luckily, he doesn't live here, but his property is back being an Airbnb. So those are just some of the things and looking forward to finding out more information on how you're going to help the businesses and the homeowners along the route to keep Wabashaw viable and active and hopefully the businesses don't go out of business while we're restoring the very old pipes and sewage and water underneath the rain system. So, thank you, congratulations, I didn't know you were that old.
That experience. Thank you, Brenda, you probably know we've got that short-term rental piece under general item, general business item 10-1. Any other public comment? Anybody on the Zoom who wanna make public comment? Give me a second to give us the shout. If you're on Zoom and you're having trouble making public comment, but you just wanna wave your hand or put it in the chat, we'll give you a minute. Hi, welcome. Sorry, you probably just came in when we were talking, public comment, please feel free to share a few minutes of comment.
Thank you very much.
Let us know your name. Yeah, your name and your residence, thanks.
My name is Dr. Pete Knoback, I live at 329 Main Street, I've been there 30 years, basically, maybe ten of 30 years ago. And two years ago, about 15, I lived in a motor vehicle accident. I was a chiropractor here in town for 16 years and something like that. And I had damage to my shoulder, it was something I had to retire. But I can't do the things I use. That's partly a underage situation, I'm 68 now. I got a letter here, I went up to northern Minnesota to see my brother, went to my 50th graduation from Moore High School and went to a celebration of wife of a friend's wife and son. And I came back home and my wife said, um, some please stop. So stopped at my home and gave her a letter. Well, the letter was dated June 30th. Well, this was almost the 20th of July. And I had 10 days to respond to it. Well, things happened over these last two days. My wife got a lift chair and I put it together. I had about 10 pound weight limit on my arms and stuff. I have medical documentation for that if anybody wants to see it. And I took it out and I put it, I called Mr. Baker and told him, he told me to put it on a right. And I did, or Thursday night, Friday morning, he'll pick it up. Well, one of your officers came around Monday morning and was taking pictures. And I know my yard there is because I can't live and I can't do a lot of things right now. But I was over at Frank's, but I took him up to the funny here because he's a veteran. And he had some, yeah, some medical issues and he took care of that. And he said, this officer stopped and gave me a thing. And about, about my cars, I have collector cars. I don't, you can only drive one car at a time and I just didn't, I put them down there, I didn't cover. I have pictures of other vehicles in town here that are not covered. And they're licensed, about 2007, they haven't been driven. I can start my cars at the end of the week. Matter of fact, I'm having one of them towed over to Nelson here in a day or two, to the voices over there. Pete didn't have Darren. And because the brake line, I don't drive it. But I'm just wondering if I can have more time doing it. Is that fine with you, Mr. Stark?
Think that's policy and staff can follow up on?
Yeah, because like I said, you wanna see the letter, it was dated, how come I didn't get this letter to three weeks after it was dated?
That's probably a good issue for staff to take care of, since it's not a policy.
I know, I just say, I'm not mad, I'm like, this is the first time I came to the city council. I had friends, Bob Booger, you know Bob? Did anyone know Bob? Yeah, he was a good friend of mine. I used to go turkey hunting out in this place, drive around this field and you know, have a fear. But I'm not mad at anybody, I just wish I had more time. You know, the thing is, is you get older, you can't do things you used to do. I'm sorry. And the thing is about this town that I don't know why people spread rumors. I was gone, they had me, somebody at the bowling alley.
I think I published, in the interest of time, I published just to have a
Why?
Okay.
And I'm dead.
Okay.
I just wanna tell you, they told my sons, I had, I had three sons, I had two of them, I've worked at bowling alley a few years ago and I know Jim, but I said hi legally to my wife. We've been, we'll be married 40 years, come the 28th here. But I'm moving up north. Why do people start rumors? They're idiots and Mormons, I call them. There's no pill that can cure them. And you have to put up with it. And I say, paybacks usually will, but I'm honest, truthful and everything. Like I said there, if you went to Sunday school, you learned the ten commandments. And I think the ten, or eight, don't make false accusations about your enemy.
I agree. I would agree, talk to you, Paul.
What should I do with this?
Oh.
Okay.
You can leave it with us.
Can I? Okay, I appreciate it.
And for now, I'm just pretty talking to me.
Yeah, I, I don't I don't know, who is my councilman?
Y'all.
Who y'all are? Y'all are like
Biden and I.
You're over on
Meligan.
Meligan, yeah, you're down 10th Street.
I'm on 10th Street.
You're on 10th Street. Were you in, who was that, whose house I went in then?
Dr. Baird.
Your house, right?
Yeah. So I'm one sec.
Thank you very much, I have to go. See, I have a disabled light head.
Totally understand.
Leave those papers for
Yeah, maybe of those.
Oh, you have, that's
And as always, for anybody who makes public comment, if you can't stay for the rest of the agenda, we understand, it's not real to leave. We just wanna make it possible for you to make comment right at the top of your hours. Do we have any changes or additions to the agenda? I don't know if there's any staff changes or council changes. These are supposed to be staff changes.
Yeah, I can barely hear you.
All right, any council agenda changes? Otherwise, I'll make a quick presentation. I don't need redundant, but thank you, Joe, that's a good long run for service and I appreciate your team being here, that speaks volumes, obviously. Thank you to everyone who made River Days, Riverboat Days possible. And that was a huge additional investment in time and energy with a new committee. Of course, the chamber always has a lot to do with it and just city in general, police, fire, EMS. My favorite part of Riverboat Days is the Fairman's Water Route. So I told Caroline not to miss that next year, it's really great. Our Miss Wabashaw representatives are already in service, they were at the CJC tonight for National Night Out, which is still on. If you need to have a burger or a hot dog, they'll be there till seven o'clock. Wendy, Tony and I went to the Coalition of Greater Minnesota Cities Conference last week, it was excellent. It was a little depressing because it started off with a kind of an autopsy, the public legislature failed to accomplish their goals this year. But it was good to have them explained from sort of a political and policy perspective. And I think it was also revealing and I think, I think invigorating to hear retired elected officials who'd had, I think, 20 plus years of service kind of explain what they see in the Capitol with what the public doesn't see, the good people that are working on our behalf each and every day, regardless of their party affiliation. So that was really good. Monday and 21, a long parks tour, I'm sure they saw a lot, I was kind of jealous because they got to ride all around and see all the parks. I went on the tour of the Sheldon Theater, which if you haven't been, is spectacular, it went through a 2018 renovation. It's been through subsequent renovations, but most recently 2018. Uniquely, it is one of two municipal theaters in the country, which I knew that it was a municipally affiliated theater, it has kind of a unique arrangement. They are city employees, so their, their artistic director is a department head, like a chief of police. But artistically, they do their work separately, they are self-funded. So Public Works takes care of that facility, which I thought was interesting. I saw those big chandeliers at the top of the theater and I thought, I don't think I would wanna work for the Public Works Department in the city of Red Wing if I had to change those light bulbs. But really interesting, lots of people, Laurel was there, a lot of people from all over the state. I mean, every park along part of Minnesota was represented. So thank you, Red Wing, for putting on such a great conference, it was a beautiful day, beautiful series of days to be there, it was just wonderful. Close to the St. James, but we were all around the city. So thanks for Tony and Wendy's time. And another topic that came up, which is regarding disability related to PTSD, I think is an important one for cities to pay attention to. Childcare and housing were elevated just as highly as I think we probably expected they would be. Even some conceptual thinking about how employers subsidize childcare directly, like with a number of SPAS determined by the number of employees that they perceive would need childcare. So some innovative thinking and it's always good to meet people from across the state. With regard to childcare, I found it interesting that a city as small as Little Falls had successfully achieved a $1.4 million federal grant. However, it's with the cost of inflation only going about half as far as they had hoped it would. And it's a ton of work to administer a federal grant. So good to talk to people directly about the kinds of things that we hear in the news, very worth the time. From a committee report standpoint, I know that Jeff has something to say about housing and I'll let him go first. I just want to also mention, the primary is August 9th, that's Tuesday from 7:00 to 8:00, 7:00 in the morning until 8:00 at night. And the polling location is the fire station. Go ahead, Jeff.
Yeah, myself, Kathy Anderson, our CDR rep, and Matt Tyler, Meg Brooke, Nancy C, and Robin Walton. We attended the second of five workshops put on by the Southeastern Minnesota Housing Institute. And our team coach Jill Penix, Minnesota Housing Partnership rep, attended the Zoom. And participating community teams are from Wabashaw, you know, our population's 2559. Winona, 25948. Winnebago, 1391. Jamesville, 2453. The major topic of this communication, the major output from this session was developing an effective elevator pitch on what we want to accomplish. And the purpose is to get people to engage in conversation on the project goals with this team. This is elevator pitch we came up with. Action-minded community members have joined together to focus on specific housing needs. This committee called WODGE, which stands for the Wabashaw Area Team for Community Housing. It's currently identifying underutilized land or buildings to develop a variety of housing needs. We hope to make our quaint river town a place where all residents, new and homegrown, feel they are part of a safe, vibrant community that celebrates growth together. If you have time, talent, or funding to support our community growth, please reach out to WODGE. We also had a very interesting presentation from a pretty famous developer on more efficient development of design process, which eliminates waste and reduces infrastructure costs. And they, they provided this software, this free, Tyler has, has, and I haven't had a chance to look at it yet. And it was, been interesting to hear from some of these other towns, like, it was interesting to hear that Winnebago, you know, that small little town, 1300 or so. Big budget every year on the city level, 20 to 35,000 demo foreclosed tax properties that cannot be rehabbed. Now, the sad part is, they have not had new construction in town for 12 years. The next session we have in October will focus on coming up with a good pitch to developers, potential funders for the housing projects. Um, the next session we have in October will focus on coming up with a good pitch to developers, potential funders for the housing projects. In February twenty twenty-three, the team will give the pitch to some developers. And in May twenty twenty-three, give the same pitch to potential funding sources. And we're also planning on releasing RFP for a housing study in Wabashaw this week. These should normally be done at least every five to ten years, and these are required to be eligible for certain uh, external funding opportunities. And that's, yeah.
Good job. Thank you for being there. Thanks. Uh, you had a done a party. I think, no, thank you for being there. Super. And other committee reports? I like to talk about utilities.
Sure. Uh, we did have utilities yesterday, but nothing of notable for the board here.
Planning.
Uh, so we talked about short-term rentals again, uh, which is on our agenda. Uh, talked a little bit about small mines in town, um, more for kind of twofold, to mine those small areas under five acres and um, and potentially utilizing them for river sand um, storage and everything. Um, and we kind of, we'll have more probably in September on that. Um, so our next meeting is likely gonna be in September. I think August, October.
I shouldn't have begun a spot for, um, I wasn't at quarter thirty and John's absent. Do you have any um, highlights you can make off from quarter thirty? I know it was a busy meeting.
Yeah, it was a busy meeting. Uh, so we talked a little bit about the barge terminal that's going on, but a lot of the talk was about financing for childcare. Uh, we, we, as you know, we, existing childcare, there's twenty-five hundred dollar grants that were available. I think there's still one or two left. We also uh, came up with uh, five thousand dollars, no, nine thou- nine thousand dollars for new childcare activities. So um, that's gonna be put together. And we're, we're getting acquainted with our new uh, Cedar rep.
Thanks from a lot of people in the community. As I was out and about Saturday and Friday to Saturday, I got a lot of thanks for the city's work on that. People who are in childcare, who used to be providers, who understand that those small incentives make a huge difference. So that's great. And we had a follow-up childcare meeting today, as well led by Ben, very much just dove right in. Seems like either he was very well prepared by Kathy, or he's a natural, or both. Um, but we still have um, possible opportunities. We, there is a D grant to kind of fund at a larger level, whether the Wabashaw grants are aiming to do. Um, we have had some hesitation on the part of um, the first children's finance consultant that we've been working with, that unless you're really close to shovel-ready, you're probably not a good applicant for that money, which is good. That'll save everybody some time, and we can keep the wheels moving. And if we work toward that and somebody um, needs that kind of larger facility grant, then we'd work for that in next year's funding cycle. And Tom's not here. Somebody else have a park to coordinate with? Parks? Okay. There's a task force convened to. Riley's gonna, thank you. Excellent. Must have been hiding behind the podium, or I'm hiding behind the chair.
Um, the park board met on July twentieth, and we discussed cameras at each park. And Athletic Field Steering Committee uh, scheduled a meeting inviting the park board. Uh, street commission met on August first. And we discussed the um, feasibility study. The ADA ramp here, Eagles.
Super. Thank you. Thanks for being here. Am I missing anybody? Darren, did you have anything you want to share? Thanks again for everything this weekend. Police, Fire, and EMS. It was a very busy one for you guys. And thanks to Dean's mom for taking care of it for you. All right. Uh, administrator's report.
Yes, and I have had Pat on the line for a long time, um, just because um, Pat is our wastewater wastewater operator and has been for fourteen years. Are you there, Pat?
Yep.
All right. And he oversees all of the water and wastewater operations for the city of Wabashaw. I've always been impressed with Pat's incredible technical knowledge of the entire system and dedication to his job. Ready to respond in any emergency. When we had a major water line break last year, Pat's quick thinking ensured the impact of the breakage was minimized and addressed within hours. This is one of the city's core functions that is critical to everything we are, we do, and we're lucky to have Pat to keep it all running. Pat is also the only employee who can say he has been laid off and rehired by the city of Wabashaw. When some years ago, the city decided to lay off all of its workers, parent external company to manage the plant, who hired Pat, then rehired Pat again. So Pat, congratulations on fourteen years. Thank you, Pat. You didn't make Joe do a speech, so I won't make you do a speech either, okay? Thanks for hanging out here. All right. See you later. And then Rebecca Schumacher has been with the Wabashaw Public Library for six years. Um, and she has a full-time job for PMI in Lake City and does this on the side, and she's an active member of the Friends of the Library. So uh, in terms of the administrator's report, I feel like I always, we've got a lot to go through, but I just wanna let you know that I've done a new formatting to tie the strategic goals for council with some of my reports. So just kind of um, you know, Jeff did a great job talking about the housing institute that's tied with the goal to expand residential commercial growth through the Highway sixty reroute project. Um, and M and I are working, continuing to work to find funding sources to see that project through. So I just tagged Brian in another email today. We're looking into potential grant uh, opportunities. The athletic field facilities was the second strategic goal. That's well on its way and hopefully slated for next year. Um, our barge terminal work group um, met, and we're waiting on grant funding to proceed with that. The Bolton Inc. is uh, proceeding with the environmental uh, review. Identify, track, and retain businesses, particularly childcare is another strategic goal. Uh, we've covered that a lot today, but just to say that I'm working with the state of Minnesota to receive an additional ninety-five thousand for HVAC replacement for Wabashaw small businesses. And so far, the Chocolate Shop, Slippery's, Bush Auto, and Main Street Kitchen have expressed a need for participation in the program. And then I'm working on an environmental review for a hundred thirty-eight thousand dollar grant we received to support the riverfront revitalization. Um, the Master Parks and Trails Planning Steering Committee is underway, um, and hoping to complete work in a short timeframe. Um, Tyler is working on a new capital financing plan so we can prioritize and create time development. Um, some, some, some news that's very unfortunate is we did not receive the anticipated low-interest financing for the streets improvement project due to no bonding bill. I am working on exploring all options and will plan to present something to council of what are our options with that, and Katie's working with me on that. Um, and then just um, the project to raise the manhole near the bridge is twenty-five percent complete, and our new computer system for our wastewater treatment plan is in planning phase. And the rest of it is just little updates. Um, you know, just kind of noted, uh, training and development, that's another goal. And just once again, this is our strategic plan, and I'm hoping to just kind of keep people updated and then how we're progressing. And I think with community and growth and development goals, really, all of them, we're doing well. So that was nice to, to check in on that.
Thanks. Thanks for the reformatting. I know that takes some work, but it gets into a format that's easily digestible, which Craig has asked for. I think it's also good for the public. So it's not, it's easier for us to understand. It's easier for everybody to understand it. So I think that is a super format.
Okay.
Thank you. Um, wonderful. So with that, we have our consent agenda, which is short, uh, just our council minutes from seven, five, and the August warrants. Do we have a motion for proof of consent? Thank you, Tim. We have a first from Tim. We have a second from Brian. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye. Opposed, same sign. And public hearing not tonight. General business, uh, ten-one is the short-term rental licensing process. And we have before us a description of this item summary. Um, as Tim mentioned, planning's looked into this. Um, I don't know if Mike had the line.
But I think I'll summarize it. Um, and then. Hey, Mike. Hopefully this is you. Okay, there you are. Okay, you're on speaker. It's not great. Um, I think Zoom is actually functioning properly. So if you wanna try to also log into our Zoom, it's on wabashaw.org. Just go to the agenda. But we'll have you on speakerphone just to make sure it works. Um.
I could do that, but like I told you today, I'm off to the grass first.
Oh, that's okay. Just turn the video off. Okay. All right. Well, we can hear you. Um, so today's purpose is to determine whether or not the city of Wabashaw, which is to start licensing, registering short-term rentals in the city of Wabashaw through a one-time registration process. Uh, the planning commission has looked at the issue. Uh, we've got a number of documents that include adding um, uh, this is a permitted use, um, some, some draft uh, rental regulations, some draft FAQ. Um, and speaking with um, Attorney Flaherty ahead of time, he has indicated that these aren't considered final documents. And I just wanted to make sure that we have consensus from a council to invest staff time. I think roughly speaking, um, Attorney Flaherty is estimating two to four thousand dollars of work to kind of put this in ordinance form. Um, and um, I think something else to just say is that you know, staff does continue to have concerns around time and level of effort in launching a short-term rental program. Um, we've achieved probably even a hundred percent compliance with a lodging tax. And we've developed an FAQ page, and so we feel, um, and we're trying to do a better job informing people of their obligations to obtain a Minnesota health license through that FAQ page. So we feel comfortable with status quo. However, I know this was an issue of planning commission, and there was consensus from planning commission to launch this process. And then just in, in terms of um, speaking with Attorney Flaherty ahead of this, and he can kind of summarize it, is with we could just do a registration process and not a licensing process. Well, actually, hopefully people can hear you. Just speak really loud. If you could explain sort of the difference between those two things, I would appreciate it. Um, Mike. Yeah.
Can you hear if I talk this loud? Can you hear me?
Can you guys hear? We can hear you. Yep.
Loud enough? Okay. Um, yeah, so first, first, I did not draft the documents you have. I think Harry had drafted most of them in conjunction with the planning commission. So I haven't researched or done really any work on this, or very little work. Um, that being said, I think you can do what is, what Caroline is referring to as the registration, basically a requirement that people notify the city when they are operating a short-term rental property. I think the problem with doing it that way is, and I don't know that any city in the state does it that way. They might not. Nick licensing is kind of the normal way to do it. But I think the, the issue with doing it is just a registration is you will not be able to enforce uh, violators of, of any requirements. So if there's code requirements, you know, in order to be a short-term rental, the typical way to do that would, to enforce those would be to revoke the property owner's rental license. But if you're not issuing them a license, there's nothing to revoke. And so you're really left with a criminal enforcement. You know, if, you know, if they, you have an ordinance, and it says short-term rentals have to comply with ten conditions, and you have evidence they don't comply, you could charge them with a misdemeanor citation. Um, if the ordinance provided that it was a misdemeanor. Um, that might be kind of hard to enforce. So again, essentially, there's more teeth to a licensing ordinance. If you have a licensing ordinance, you can revoke their license. Um, if they don't comply with the terms of the license, just like any other license the city issues. You know, tobacco uh, or liquor is by the better example. If a liquor license holder um, is caught selling to underage kids, Sting, for example, um, you can give them intermediate sanctions, like suspend their license for a weekend or a day, or have them pay an administrative fine, or revoke their license entirely. So you've got teeth to that particular license, and then you can enforce with the threat of losing the license. I think if you do just a general registration, you know, the benefit of the registration, I think, is that it's less formal, probably, and maybe less staff work to do it that way. Um, but again, I haven't researched if anybody else has done it. Uh, I do think that the ordinance, or the kind of the outline of the ordinance that's been put together. Um, my view of that is it needs to have, it's set up as a licensing ordinance. So just like a liquor license or tobacco license, you apply, you're issued a, a license, and then there's a requirement. And so the thing that's missing from that document that I pointed out to Charlie and Harry was, was the um, due process. So if, if you're going to issue a license, and then you're gonna provide it so it can be revoked, you have to get people an appellate right. You know, a right to appeal that determination um, on the facts of why it was revoked. So you'd have to add that in. I think in either case, a registration or a license, I think the staff could handle all of that within the, what I, what I would say is within the four corners of city ball. I don't think you need to go out and do inspections of rental properties. Uh, if you don't want to, um, you can simply make uh, the condition of properties, a condition of the license, such as, you know, having carbon monoxide detectors in, in proper working order, or adopting provisions of the state building code. And then you would just include a, a ordinance provision that says the city has the right, without obtaining an administrative search warrant, to search uh, for a violation uh, of these conditions. And so then later on, you would preserve the right to go enforce if there's reason to do that. Um, but you wouldn't, at the time licenses would be issued, you wouldn't probably do that. Um, I mean, Caroline, Caroline can speak to that. You could, you could inspect every single property um, that's given a license. But apparently, there's over twenty of these. And the city doesn't really have the resources to do that. Or at least that was staff's sort of determination. So, and there's options. I mean, with everything I just said, there's options. If you have any questions, you can probably do other things. Um, you know, and then separately, I, I would say this kind of came about because lodging tax. And if you wanted to just simply enforce the lodging tax, you know, I think there, there might be ways to do that. You know, without a licensing or, or registration ordinance. Although it's going to be much easier to do that with a licensing ordinance. Uh, you know, paying a, the lodging tax would be a condition of the license, and you know, you're gonna probably gain a higher degree of voluntary compliance if, if the license revocation is threatened uh, or an issue if they don't comply. So that's basically, and again, I haven't researched it. Caroline asked me not to until the council decides they wanna move forward with, you know, whatever kind of ordinance you wanna move forward with. And then I would kind of um, you know, uh, determine how best to take what Harry's done and put that into a, a, you know, an actual ordinance. And, and then there's other issues with this that I noted. Just to, to give one, uh, there's like an affidavit in this. And that says, you know, the affidavit, certify or declare under town be a perjury under the laws of the state of Minnesota. I think that, you know, I don't know the origin of that, but if the idea is you're gonna enforce the perjury, the criminal perjury statute, um, six oh nine point four eight is the criminal perjury statute. I think that would be very difficult in this scenario. I think it's gonna be very difficult to prove that at the time the affidavit was signed. There was, it was signed knowing there was a, a false statement. I think that's gonna be you know, prohibitively difficult to gather evidence, be on a reasonable doubt that that's occurred. And I think there's also an argument that this um, affidavit for the um, that's submitted to a city and not a court, doesn't even have been the purview of that statute. I'm not sure on that, but my point in saying all that is there, there needs to be a little bit more, you know, I think if the council just gives the general direction as to what we want, we can iron out some of those issues and kind of bring something back that you know, encompasses most of what Harry's got here, but it's kind of in a better ordinance form and just a little bit more um, final, I guess I would say. So that's all I really got to say about it. I can try and answer questions if I'm, if I'm able to.
Okay, thanks, Mike. So for tonight, we don't need action aside from guidance to staff? What direction?
Okay, we're, we're gonna be investing resources in.
I got a question for Mike.
Question coming from Jeff, Mike.
Mike, this ordinance language that we presented here, worked on with the planning commission, this all came from a, a ordinance already in effect in Lake City. We're just basically duplicating what they've been very successfully implementing in Lake City. So I don't know why we're going into the weeds with all some of this weird stuff we're talking about. We're just trying to get a registration. I think, I don't, I can't remember if you're exactly considered a registration or a license. I think it's registration. I think it's just a registration pro- process up in Lake City, which is what we're trying to implement here.
And Mike's pointing out that that would, that would have less teeth for enforcement. Go ahead, Mike.
This is the licensing ordinance, what, what Harry put together is the licensing ordinance. I ask what, which, which ordinance, which city this is based off of? That was my first question.
Yeah, he's on the line. Uh, Harry? Um, I think. Harry, can you hear us?
I can.
Is, which cities was this ordinance based off of?
Yeah, so this is based off of what I would say is, is a number of different cities. I'd say primarily Lake City. Which we talked about a lot during, uh, planning commission sessions as well as some of the earlier discussion sessions. Um, a few others that we looked at included. Red Wing, uh, Spring Lake, or sorry, Spring Park, uh, Roseville, Crow Wing County. Rochester, St. Paul, Prior Lake, uh, Duluth was another discussion point. Um, Winona, Eagan, Hastings, Saint Cloud, Minneapolis. So we did look at quite a few different approaches. To the code, but I would say most of what is before city council tonight is based off of Lake City.
So, so, all right, well, that's fine. If you want to just adopt this, I think what I'm more saying is. Ordinance form, you know, if you look at the document. There's no caption in, in the document at the very top where it says, you know, now your board, you know. Coming down the city of La Flavashaw to adopt the following ordinance, which is an amendment or addition to section, whatever section you're going to put this in. You know, if not, it's not anything of adoptable form, I don't think, tonight. And so if that's what you want to do, if you want to adopt this verbatim. I don't think there's anything wrong with that. You know, if you can do that. Um, and that's, you know, the ordinance has its system in the code. I think that the session passed. You know, but this is a license or not a registration order. It says right in that that it's a license. So there might be some confusion there. Um, is this intended to be a, like, you're going to issue. You know, like paragraph E, license require a license that location. You know, for a short-term rental dwelling must be demanded by the owner. When I talked to Caroline, she was saying that you were thinking about a registration, which is. Different than what I'm reading here. So, you know, I think it's fine. You can do what's in here. That's fine.
The FAQ page refers to a licensing process. The ordinance refers to a registration process. So that's where things that Mike identified need to get cleaned up. It's confusing if you read it. The FAQ page refers to licensing, the ordinance refers to registration.
I mean, even the affidavit page is identical to the more like.
I, I don't really think it matters if you call it a registration, call it license, as long as it's consistent across the five documents we have. I don't really, I mean. Either way, I guess what you're getting at is what these people, the city wants to know where these areas are. And are they meeting the standards we want to meet in the affidavit? I mean, that's really what it comes down to. So call it what you want. I don't really care, but just we need to be consistent.
Can I ask a question then? Do you want to, if, if people violate the terms of this ordinance? Do you want, does the city want to have the ability to revoke their license? Or is this simply just to know where they're located regardless of whether they comply with the specific terms of the ordinance?
Should be able to revoke.
I would love to revoke it. If, 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 in my opinion, I would revoke it.
Revoke the registration or the license, whatever you want to call it.
Yeah, okay. So I think Mike is saying that he has to draft a process by which. What happens if someone violates it? That's also missing from the Lake City ordinance. Is those further paragraphs on, okay, if somebody didn't get their working carbon monoxide detector. And we want to revoke their license, what's that process? That's where Mike sees that's missing from what we have laid out here.
Yeah, yeah, and I don't, it doesn't really ma- matter to me that Lake City adopted this. I think you, if you're going to. Give somebody a license or a permit, you have to have a, a due process law. You have to have processes for them to appeal it if you revoke it. I don't think you can just, you know, have the city administrator make the declaration that it's been violated and revoked, unilaterally revoked. And the, their permits. I just don't think that's legal. So, and, and, you know, if, so in Lake City, if this is actually their ordinance. They might do that, it just might not be in their code. So for example, if somebody doesn't have a carbon monoxide detector, they might write them a letter and say, we're going to revoke your license. You know, if you don't get a car- carbon monoxide detector in fourteen days and what aspect it. Um, you know, and if they don't, then they might write another letter saying your license is revoked. You can appeal this to the city council. And my, if they don't do that, I don't think it's legal. I, my view of it is that should be in the ordinance. The process should be in the ordinance that you're going to use. So, a- and I think all licensing ordinance is usually written that way. So I, again, I haven't researched this. Um, you know, I would look at some of those other larger cities like Duluth and some of the other ones Terry mentioned to see what they do. Um, but I, again, I haven't done that, so.
But yes, and again, I gave him instructions to hold out because we haven't had this, this discussion, uh, today. But yeah, what I'm hearing from Mike is it still requires kind of his. His review, although Mike, I think, you know, yeah, we can talk about, we can get into those details. But I think we, we heard that.
And what are we, and what are we looking at? Looking at, if we look at a registration and that's going to. Don't have to register what the address is and I'll use the owner. That has to be posted in the, in the building and the building will have to have, have to be compliant with health regulations. And we're not going to check them, but we'll just say that they're going to be compliant and compliant with.
They have to self-certify. And we're trying to make this easy on them, but we want to be aware of the requirements that like Brian says of being required to have health. Health department licenses and all the other stuff, you know, I mean, we don't inspect the hotel. We don't inspect bed and breakfast.
They kind of, in somewhere in, in these documents, it sounded like there, there's a difference.
Well, there is, because one says, uh, does food, one doesn't. So there is slightly difference. But they still need license in front of the state. They still need to be governed. They still need to be certain standards and stuff. I would not say they're identical by any means. I mean, what we don't have in our pack is our application form and affidavit form, at least I don't think it is.
Do we have a bed and breakfast ordinance in place?
No, that's the whole point of this. Oh, a bed and breakfast? Yeah, that falls under, yeah, that falls within the zoning and motels and hotels.
Okay.
If that's missing, that's on me, because that was drafted.
Short-term rentals are busy and that's a big component of it, um, as we move forward.
Before we get any deeper, um, I just, I was on board with sending this to planning to see where it went. And then from what I've read, um, from what I hear between our planner and our attorney, this is getting really muddy. Um, I would be in favor of just shutting the experiment down right now. Um, the consistent theme that I've heard from staff is that this is going to burden them. Um, um, we have ninety-five to a hundred percent compliance with the lodging tax, which we collect. From our own fact, uh, handout, the state of Minnesota has, has all these licenses. That they issued in these places that they're, they have to comply with. So it's a situation where we're enforcing state permits. And so if these state permits need to be enforced, why can't the state do it? I'm sorry, what'd you say?
Do we have ninety-five percent compliance?
They said almost, they said a hundred probably now.
We know all, every rental, not every, every rental property goes through VRBO or the other ones.
Right.
People do self, so there's probably twenty, thirty, forty more out there that are just doing self-rentals, you know, to who people they know. We have no idea who they are, what's being rented, rented out. We don't have it without a registration process. We do not know who is being, using their property as a rental. Kind of short-term rental.
And that's registration and all of a sudden we're getting into licensing and revoking licenses.
Mike's taken us down the rabbit hole with some of this stuff.
Yeah.
Said, Lake City is, has very successfully implemented their policy out there. And I haven't heard, I, I go up there to Lake City for pickleball, you know, and talk to people and. The people that made VRBOs, they don't have any issues dealing with paying their fee and, you know, signing an affidavit, you know. Because they're trying to, they want to be fair to their customers. They're not going to get repeat customers if their places are unsanitary and. Don't meet standards. So I mean, it's a good way for them to run a legitimate business. If they have to go through a, you know, the council or the city to get a registration. Like every other place, we issue liquor licenses, we liquor, we, we register pool fees for God's sakes. You know?
Yeah, if, if we can't enforce a registration though, and they don't want to register, then, you know, it's, it's all for naught.
I think you can, okay, I just jump in. I think you can enforce the registration or the license. I think Jeff got a real point there when you say you don't, if you're not, if you're not registering. Long-term rentals, like, you know. Things that are longer than thirty days or things that don't meet the definition of that section for a short-term rental. You know, if you're not checking their fire alarms or anything, you know, maybe you don't really need to. Um, and the, and the state licenses it anyway. Uh, you know, a lot of cities don't even regulate this at all, so. You know, I, I'm fine drafting something like this. I just, you know, if you get to a point where. I guess if, if this is more of a disclaimer for me, if you get to a point where, you know, somebody complains. Um, you know, that I, I stayed in this Airbnb and I know that the fire alarms were disabled. I was there, I thought. You know, you'll have to be in a situation where you, you have to enforce that back, or you, you might get complaints that you're enforcing. So, it just depends on how much you want to put into this. I think there's a lot of wiggle room for the city. You can do a very simple. Ordinance, you can do a complicated ordinance, you can do no ordinance at all, you know, so I think it's. It's really a policy issue. So if this is what you want to do, just, just what Lake City does and just adopt something and, and. So that you get a, you know, whether you call it a registration or license is really semantic, in my view. I mean, eh, because here's why, city staff will then have to be involved at some level, right? You know, whether you're, you're calling it registration or calling it license. I think city staff will have to be involved in, in registering or in licensing. And in my view, regardless of which one of those it is, you know, it's going to be pretty minimal involvement. You know, I, I think it, like I say, it'll be within the four corners of city hall. You know, you'll have a. Application and it will be up to the applicant to. Self-certify, somebody said that, you know, providing, perhaps if you require a state health license in the ordinance. It'd be up to them to, to obtain it, a copy of it and provide it to the city for your file. And then the city staff will have to compile the, the application and the attachments and just say they don't file. And so, and then whether you're calling it registering or you're calling it issuing a license. You know, I'm not sure it takes more or less city, city staff time at that point. Um, so you know, if, if, if this is what you want to do, I still think there's some minor changes to what's in here that I would, I would make. And, um, but you know, we can put this in relatively the same form into an ordinance if that's what you want to do. Um, you know, I, and I guess the other point I would make is. You know, your planners looked at a lot of ordinances. I was listening to him say all those. So I assume that this has been vetted and this is what was chosen. Um, this is the ordinance that was chosen, right, by planning commission or by whoever worked on it?
That's correct.
So, yeah, so I mean, if you want to do that, that's fine. I'm not going to, you know. If you're just copying what another city does, I do think there's an issue if you want to revoke the. License or registration, you know, what is the process for that? So what I would recommend is you add a, you know, a revocation, you know, a statement saying that you can revoke it. If you want to, or you know, if there's a violation of code and then a second statement about short, short section with a few paragraphs that just discusses the process. Um, so, that would be my, the last thing I can say about it. I mean, you know. I don't think you need me to go do a deep dive into the research if Harry's already done that. I think it's more along the lines of you just need to direct us what you want, if anything. And it sounds like there might be kind of an a- argument to do nothing too, so. And, and there are cities out there that do nothing, so that, you know, there's that avenue too.
Any other questions for Mike or Harry for that matter, or Tim or Clint? So for action, it sounds like we have most of, I mean, planning has done most of what would be useful or legal. If we decided to look forward. As Brian say, he's fine with nothing. Although, I'm also one hundred percent fine with status quo. The reason, my reason is we have not heard from the public that the complaint is on behalf of the. Lodging establishment being unsafe, unclean, um, uh, unusable. So if, if we had public here telling us this, this is, needs to be monitored and somehow these, um, these dwellings are not, they're not.
Well, I mean, we've heard from a number of individuals, but not probably officially at city hall. So I mean.
I've heard the counterargument from, you know, business community members who are saying, we're working with these little, they've got lending, they've got business insurance.
Oh, I agree with that. That's why we don't want to make it so complicated. All we want to do is register them and make them compliant with. The twelve bullets we have on our affidavit and.
It's more to make them aware that they need to comply.
It's a public education.
Well, because I bet half of them don't need, know that they need to have a state motel hotel license. I guarantee you they don't.
I think we can do that virtue. You know, just education rather than a, than a registration or a license. Um, I'm just completely off work with this. I, I'm sorry.
I just don't think it's a lot of work, yeah.
I don't either. It's not a lot of work. Is it a lot of work to register ATDs?
I think it should be a simple process.
It's a process.
It's a process.
Set up, it's there.
But I don't go into American and say, well, you missed a, a fire extinguisher, you're, you're shut down. And I don't think that's any intent of what this is now. That's not what we're intending at all.
Yeah, I, I'd go ahead and just move to discontinue pursuing this.
We have a motion to discontinue this item, our action item. Do we have a second? I think it fails for a second. Do we have any alternative motion?
I make a motion for the staff and the attorney to pursue a simple registration process.
Registration, not licensure.
I'm, I'm saying registration probably sounds simple.
Do we have a second for that motion? There are none. All right, so you have a second. Okay, so we have a motion for a. Staff-directed, attorney-advised, simple registration form, uh, consistency across formats. Mike has advised, sort of given us a little glimpse of what that looks like. We have a motion from, Craig, we have a second from Jeff.
Is Mike still on?
Mm-hmm.
Hey, Mike, I have a question for you. Um, regarding revocation or revoking this, what do we do for liquor license? Do we have an actual process in our ordinance that says this is what happens when we revoke it? Or is that more of a general across all of our licenses? I mean, we don't specifically.
I don't know.
Okay.
I don't know the answer to that. In other cities, you have revoked, well, actually, I've never revoked a liquor license.
State invokes it.
Um, but I've been, I've been involved with. You know, enforcing actions against businesses that illegally sell. An option under their, those other cities' ordinances to revoke, but I've never seen that happen.
Okay.
Um, but usually intermediate sanctions are imposed by the council. Uh, so that's what I've seen. I don't know what, no, I can pretty much answer your question. No, there's no general revocation process in the city code. Um, and so, I talked to Caroline about this and I just said, well, do you have a peddler's or solicitor's or, or ordinance? A lot of cities require those to be licensed and usually in that section, there is a revocation process. And, you know, and then what I suggested is you just take that process and, and copy that into this ordinance, you know, so it's the same process.
Yeah, no, I'm with you. Okay.
You guys don't have that, so, yeah, go ahead.
Okay, no, I was just, that's, then you answered my questions. That's good.
Yeah, I don't think it has to be real complicated. I mean, a revocation process is like, you know, any license either fails to comply with the above terms of the license is subject to revocation. Then the next section, revocation shall take the following process. You know, a letter will be sent, a, a notice of revocation letter will be sent within many days. Anybody who wants to appeal it can appeal it to the city council and have it here, you know, in better legal words, but that's basically it. I mean, I think, you know, I, I do not think, as long as looking through this ordinance, if this is the license, they don't even say in here that it can be revoked. There's no section that says that. So I think to me, that's the main point. Do you want to revoke them or not? And so that's kind of what you need to decide. I think, you know, we can do a simple ordinance or I'm sure, I'm sure Duluth or other cities, that's probably complex ordinance too. Not sure that's needed in.
Wow, yeah, they do because they actually have individuals that can do it. So they have a department that can do it. Where we have no intention of adding staff nor major reverting staff to do this.
I think we, we've heard that people still want revocation, a simple registration process that you're talking about being able to revoke the license or not.
I'm for it, but it needs to be just as simple as, you don't need the things that are on the affidavit. We can revoke it.
Mm-hmm.
And if somebody wants to come to the city council and talk about that, I'm all for it. I don't, that's fine by me. But to me, it's, but I would not say the staff have to go out there and inspect everything a lot either.
Yeah.
If there's, you know.
The other point I wanted to make, because it's come out, is the Minnesota healthcare license. So there's nothing in this affidavit. It says you comply with city code, state statutes or federal laws, but there is nothing conceived in this process where we're asking for a copy of their Minnesota healthcare license and checking that and reviewing that. So just clarify that because that come, may come up in your public comments. They're still going to have to go take care of that and I don't envision that we would be revoking a license because once again, that's with the Minnesota healthcare. What we would look at is did they post the contact information, the smoking detector, the, you know, this is including a checklist of items that we would be looking at, but it doesn't include a Minnesota healthcare license.
It's a roster.
Yeah.
With some reminders about the things they're supposed to do.
Mm-hmm.
And an FAQ.
Yeah, no, it's self-certified.
Right, right.
It's self-certified.
How, how we, what we receive, what the city gains, what the public gains from this, with the roster of these businesses, they've been reminded of the requirements that are their own to worry about and they have an FAQ that walks into.
Yes.
Yeah, and just with, again, with the elections coming up and everything and the budget season, I mean, I personally think this is a twenty twenty-three rollout process, but Mike could certainly work on getting this going, but. And then we still don't know who's going to be in charge of it. I think we'll be drawing the short sticks. We have to figure out who's the lead registration person, so.
So Craig, your motion basically says registration is similar to the Lake City process. Is that where we're, where we're going?
A simple registration. I, I didn't, I don't, I haven't reviewed the Lake City documents that well. I like to know of feasible terms. There's no feasible terms.
We decided in the planning commission, or the number we recommended was two hundred dollars for registration, one-time registration.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's what's there. Two hundred dollars, one-time registration fee. So it's in the FAQ. Again, this is where probably we need someone to look at it for consistency. Oh, I see. It says XXXX. So, yeah. I thought they voted on.
Because you guys don't have the registration form or an affidavit in there. So I, I think we could send it out. Do you guys, you want to look at?
Yeah, I would like to.
Because it, I, to me, it explains it a lot better than.
I have, that's on me that I just missed a couple of things.
Or we can send it out. But I believe we discussed that planning two hundred, which we would still have to come to city council to determine that.
I would like that.
You can make it a thousand if you really wanted, but we wanted something.
That's fine.
Worthwhile, but I just.
You're willing to amend your, your motion to include that piece of it or do you want to deal with that later?
Well, if we want, yeah. Yeah, I, I, I'm not sure what I'm amending it to.
The planning commission recommended to a one-time two hundred dollar registration fee. Dean would like to see that detail in.
It's in there somewhere. I read it.
Oh, I don't know.
It's not.
And I'm not going to vote. I didn't. I don't know where I read it.
Well, we're not voting in the final anyway, so.
Right.
Just going for.
For action.
So then your motion stands.
My motion stands to develop.
Yes.
There you go. That's the new registration process.
Any further, uh, recommendation or discussion or can call for a vote? Okay, so the, the motion is for the developed staff to develop with the attorney a simple registration process for, for their action. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign.
Aye.
Okay, thanks for the discussion. Obviously, this is still a lot of work. Um, and welcome public comment. If there's, you know, something the council doesn't hear about this being necessarily, we welcome that. All right, now we have before us, our resolution was to receive a feasibility report to call for public hearing on the twenty twenty-three street utility project. So this is the next step after Katie carefully walked us through like in last meeting, um, the purpose of this report. We have it before us.
Do you want to connect to the TVs, Katie? Um, okay. All right. Could you speak louder?
Yeah, it might not be close enough. It's not a great voice.
So the purpose of the feasibility study was normally there, people that, uh, so. By the term of the proposal, it would be necessary, possibly have a new book, whether it be named, that's the problem or any other. Including the estimated cost of the equipment acting there in the work. And then a reasonable estimate of the total amount to be assessed. And then a discrepancy in the methodology used to tell your community assessments for our materials. And that has also to be there. A reminder of the project schedule and where we're at. We've been through, um, quite a bit of process already. You know, we are still in the first stage of the process. It's been a more than a round stage. We're asking you to just send the visit, please, at the beginning of work over the public hearing. At your next meeting, we will hold that public hearing. Take a public testimony on the scope of the project. And then the order of plans is either at work or in the report or as of then. From then, we will begin to do the preparation of the steps to the fall, uh, looking for a January, uh, good activity. At that point, we were prepared the assessment goal based on this, to do the same methodology. We have another information to the public to, uh, tell the results. And then we ask you to report the reassessment, then on the official assessment of, uh, before the, like those assessments. And then of what, uh, of what, and then we begin the destruction of the installation.
So when is, then you go over the assessments. When, when is that going to be?
Uh, so at the first, this, we would.
Lieutenant.
General, temporary.
Never.
I know that's the exact assessment. Is there any, can I get a, prepare a, uh, something about how the assessments are prepared so people have an idea what the range is? I think somewhere in here, it says, it's in the range, the ranges are. Range, one, it looks like the assessment is somewhere between eighty-nine hundred and ninety-seven hundred, but then something, there's another document in there that says, the line right after says, the estimated assessments for individual properties are between twelve hundred and ten thousand. So that's a pretty wide range. So what about this?
Wait, wait, can I?
What about the, 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 the.
We'll talk a little bit about the methodology.
I'm wondering about the timeline because it seems like, uh, you're not going to do the assessment during it for March, which is after the biz are led. And so people are wondering about this. And we're wondering, should we approve this project to go forward? And in order to do that, we need to have an idea what the assessments are going to be on the people that live along the street. We don't have to have the exact amount.
We, we're dealing, that's a primary column.
You just dated them, so that range will be.
I stated them, but I'm saying, are we going to have them? Is that going to be available to the public?
It's available to the public in his presentation.
His presentation.
In the preliminary cost estimates, we don't have no real cost until this.
That's the exact cost, but there's an approximate.
You'll have a really good idea of what you're going to have to pay.
When we're going to have a really good idea of what we're going to have to pay?
Right now, in a couple of minutes here.
Okay. All right, I'll, I'll sit by.
Too much cap ease. Hang on.
All right, with this project, we're also doing, uh, part of our project is this downtown streetscape plan. Um, the reason for talking a little bit about this to you is because the outcome of this plan is looking at, um, six or seven different elements. Um, within downtown, it's a little bit of planning, not, but it's looking at things where water aesthetic components within the street state environment, uh, taking the connection of each park, taking the riverwalk and the river connection, uh, taking at, um, the area under the bridge, how it was developed and how that could be, uh, improved in the underdeveloped areas. Um, and then also looking at things like refining site in the end. Now, to the extent that there are components of that planning document that exists in this project, um, that, that will inform this product as we move forward. A little bit about the two project timelines. You'll see on the right in the yellow, or right in the left in the yellow. We're, um, asking you to approve or to accept a feasibility study in August there, uh, hold the public improvement hearing in September. Um, conversely, on the downtown streetscape plan, uh, the steering committee has had their second meeting and reviewed some of the initial concepts. We're in the process of, uh, refining those concepts. Uh, and also go out for a couple of inputs, uh, such as late August, early September. Uh, have a third meeting, giving them a review of those and the recommendations for, uh, the final approval. But what comes out of that, I mean, that. Uh, so moving back to the project specific, we'll consider the, that we can talk about the utilities. Um, the big dragon effect of this project. So looking first at the center, we have video five point pipe throughout the corridor. Uh, each, how inches in diameter. Most of this was installed in the nineteen thirties. What happens with video five thing pipe is it's brittle over time. If you prep, uh, working, it's susceptible to movement. What happens then is you get groundwater, rainwater incorporating with those pipes, eventually, uh, uh, over, can, uh, over, couple of pipes cause backups. It also goes to your, who's from a tree up there that has excessive hose there. So there's something that it's, it is time to do, address those. Or mostly with the project is to replace all those spaces, the sea mains, uh, the manhole structures, um, spaced at modern standards or even the top of the main. Um, the other piece of this is replacing the sanitary service lines from those mains out to, uh, the right way line, which much of this corridor is in the building face. Part of the reason for doing that is that putting almost some infrastructure on top of it in sidewalks and streets to be watched, the underwriting infrastructure to be solid, so you won't have to, you won't have to, for, 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 for. Um, what we're finding is that we have no shared connections throughout this corridor and downtown that can happen over time. It's, uh, whether we may have service convention or water, or, uh, a building next to it, instead of any common connection, there have to be the building to the side. Uh, and so to the extent that we can separate those and bring those out to the main line, we will do that. We may not do that, this is just called a polywork in the buildings. Uh, but.
Katie, I was curious, and maybe you don't know this yet, whether the sanitary sewer service is as old as, is it, is it even formally old or is there a lot of?
I think it's very, very, we, you know, it's very, we won't refer.
Right.
Uh, we can do all that before, uh, the staff. Um, uh, the city staff personnel has walked through the downtown, the, 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 to investigate uh, what those connections look like. The assessment question. We also need to know what's connected there as we move into the next. Uh, moving to the water main. Water main is gas starting the pipe installed at one finger to conserve it. Well, some of its, its light, uh, ranging from six to twelve inches in diameter. It has become susceptible to water, you know, a couple of works that have been happening this month. Uh, one of the things too is that water line. Uh, so we do not have the best city, um, of the, the loss of production plan. Uh, so this is one of the strategy, placing water, water, the water strategies that come into the progress of this project. Uh, and we can help with this project. So we are proposing a replacement of that water main with new age, uh, type of harness. Uh, the presence and that also are appropriate. And then likewise, uh, as a signature sewer service, convert it to water services following this project, and again, part of the buttons to send those. For street and sidewalks, there was a, the, 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 the project, so the construction of street, for the, so we're in the sidewalks within the, we'll, 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 we'll. It is designed to let a ten ton slider, uh, we will bring the sidewalks into the, the finance with them. It's right on the, have a stall from, from, from the, 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 the. Uh, the storm of that may not, in, in several cases, is not the maximums look that's allowed by eight years.
The crosswalk pre-done?
The crosswalk, yes, the whole. So we'll be making those adjustments with headwinds as well, or moving into two eighty eight. Uh, we are proposing above house with the project on Main Street and the power. We have a little bit of this, the dangers of above house from, uh, the idea that we're hoping those that, um, are, are less vulnerable to be across the street. Helps make them more visible when you pass in the street and it's a, some shorts or provides a lot of safety in that regard. The other thing that the above house helps, helps in this project specifically, is your side office are not very large for downtown. And so we're going to give those perils to the maximums, uh, which required, I think, the, the above house are going to list that, that, that.
But those are good safety considerations, but are you going to run attorney movements? Because we have fifty-three foot trailer, the character trailers coming in there. They're going to have to make those moves. They can't make them while they're existing.
Yep, so as far as the, 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 the. Uh, we will also be looking at the private driveway acres, uh, when we move to construction projects. We have to follow your, the, 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 and so it's only replaced, uh, in the construction limits. Uh, and then I said, we're looking at the main street, the, 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 the. So we'll briefly, we'll run through the three segments. We have three avenues. Uh, the current rate is sixty, four to five, right away with, uh, forty four foot. Um, the, 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 has different treatments throughout the corridor, from nothing at all to, 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 to sidewalk, to wall sidewalk. And so the proposal is to replace what is there. For Main Street, uh, we actually have two segments of difference. Uh, the right way is consistent over the corridor. But the, the block from Rich Roma is fifty-two feet in width, whereas, uh, for the moment, it's a sixty. That's where you have more downtown area of, of. So again, we're, we're proposing to replace what is there, um, that can just today outside of. And I see on camera, it's similar to great, that we have a sixty-four pipe, right away with, uh, forty-four foot pavement. And again, uh, the lower bar treatments, uh, very, very down the corridor. Uh, again, replacing with, uh, like, with their, um, shorter, the above house. Whenever we move through this process, there were some additional project elements that came up. Um, one of them came up, both in our information, from a staff perspective. Uh, there in the corner of second and the market, I think some, uh, project issues specifically in the winter time transformation. Uh, and so we'll be right there, uh, placing and doing extraordinary work. So it makes sense to look at that in this project. Uh, and so installing some storms around that corridor, um, and, you know, to address some of the issues in there. Uh, ALB, there are, the ALB, the ALB, uh, let's see a picture there on the left, center, front, mission. That's where they were in the downtown, in the sense that there's some issues in place now with this project. And then I say there were two areas that mounted eight non compliant eighteen eight bricks. When you see there a picture of that at the third street, there's actually steps from the sidewalk. So we're placing that piece. And then there's also two ramps over by the, we have a media units. That are at their steep slopes in there that they give the cost of the. It's also a number of. What else, so these elements, we will have a separate monitoring for them. The process won't essentially see anything that will work. So we'll talk about the assessment of those controls and. Couple things for final, and right now we talked about the feasibility study. We've heard this from those along the corridor, about the corridor as well, that we will get to here every event during the process. Streetscape events, we can talk a little bit about that, that's kind of how the streetscape community will provide recommendations and. Input on what is incorporated. We talked about the water and sewer connections. We started an investigation process that the community will have to coordinate with some of those property owners, especially where. We have some shared connections that might be wanted to separate, so. We'll talk about keeping the compliance. We have some sidewalks that are at pretty steep slopes, and we need to try and work with the elevations. The roads encourage to try and minimize any oddities as it. We've never known that it has special or the steps, students have been ancient to filming. They're great out there, and so those are all things that we will address through the process. Project phasing has been a big of inquiry and how this is going to look during the construction. Almost beginning in the final design phase. We will be better informed at starting to formulate that phasing. We have to consider utilities and how those work, how this has been constructed. We'll also be having communications with the downtown business owners to better understand. Their hours of operation and how that works, access, their deliveries. So you can formulate that phasing to them appropriately. And then lastly, we have a photo of what happens during parking during the plan. One of the key components through all of this is going to be communication. That's something that we can help the city with in developing some communication strategies that can push out of the middle construction. Being able to post, create graphics that we posted either online or by the businesses themselves. One thing I will remember in construction too is it's going to be the key to have communication with the property of downtown. We generally have a project representative on site at all times from the engineering perspective. Their job isn't only to inspect the work and ensure the team will be. And suspects, but their job is also to be able to be based on what the. This is where most happen, they're coming in. They should feel free to call that person and have that person to be that and use them to work. Make sure those are used to them. So there always there's a same calls, everyone wants to. If you don't know about construction, it's hard for us to help. Same with this action. Also, I'll see the picture here during construction, this is actually double calls. The reason I did this is just to kind of give you a flavor of some of the strategies that we've used as we develop the plans. In this particular case, a lot of the sidewalks being placed over the. That's something that we can use in the neighborhood, the utility there already. This is definitely something we can work into the kind of specifications. During sidewalk replacement, we'll see, a little hard to see, but they use masks. And it's fairly common, we'll use masks to create that that walkover surface. And maybe masks into.
Katie, I'm so sorry, because you had a slide up and I meant to write it down, but the question has often been posed. When will we know, when will we know how we can plan? So the earliest we would know would be after final design, and I forget final design. And the bidding process is timed tail end of this year.
Keep in mind that we will develop phasing for the project, we will develop the starting thing. And the more detailed or the more inspect that can drive nerve it costs. So we don't necessarily have to say phase one to check up the listing to that week and try and limit that. And it's just that we, once they start the work, we should. The second phase, but I want to be clear in creating an expectation with this construction, construction and weather. So yeah, specifically, so.
Is it possible? Yeah.
Again, expecting to communications keep, once construction starts and we have a phasing and have a contract in place. They may put together a general schedule, but they can just be for the construction. Keep in mind that it's their estimate, they accept that they know at that time. But they will have a clue about it, so people can follow where we're at in construction, what happened this week. What's planned at the next meeting, which will be some sort of phasing, we can communicate that.
I think it'd be, it'd be wise to weigh some kind of a idea what the phasing would be. Because we have a number of businesses downtown, they had a rough year through COVID, they had fees for that. And they're gonna, this this could, project is gonna go on for the whole summer. So it's gonna affect a lot of people and a lot of businesses. So it's gonna have a negative effect on them. They know that, I think, but how much of that, how how big of effect is? So if if we had phasing that went on and they were aware of what the phasing, we could. We could have some idea what that's. I know you don't want to specify phasing because it's gonna drive the price up, but I think. That's something that we have to consider because we don't want to run people out of business.
And let me clarify, we will specify, we will put phasing in. But when those phases happen, when we start and stop, that's something in that step of discussion. We can worry about phasing, just within the final design process, because we start.
I mean, this is, this is really gonna affect downtown businesses, like Craig's talking about. There, are you aware of any like programs or something that will compensate businesses? That are totally disrupted by municipal construction costs?
We think keeping as communication and the city when we come to top off, having to. For open for for business. Potentially working with the chairman, you don't get that word out. And help communicate that access is there.
All right. The next, the next question, is there, is there, are there any programs to help?
I'll just go for Katie. That's our job. If there's programs, we gotta find them, but I've never seen any.
Would be brutal, but next summer.
Yeah.
You know, but I mean, it can't help.
I think there was a business owner that attended the first meeting who was really positive, and I appreciate her spirit. We're in a business, it's gonna be disruptive. She just said, you know, we just really have to work together, we have to communicate to one another, we have to pay attention to the information that comes to us and plan accordingly and be adaptive and all. I think that that mindset is gonna have to settle in, and it will be challenging, no doubt about it.
I have a two thing, I'm gonna make it to the dentist's office. But I'm just looking to have a beer, I might go someplace else.
Yeah, it wasn't a dentist who said it, it was a beer establishment, so I'm hoping she'll keep that. Go team attitude, because we're all gonna need it. I, yeah, I think that was her point, is you know, we just gotta make sure people know where we are and that we're open. And a lot of times that's the big deal, that downtown is open, means she's open.
All right, so moving into estimated cost, we've seen before, we haven't slightly updated since we last saw them, you do so. Some requirements and factors, but moving this project process and it's broken down into those components. And that's important because it is through the assessment discussion we'll have. Surface improvements in the streets, sidewalks, urban water. Safety here, some improvements in the main line, sanitary sewer and service connections. Similarly, water, main line, main service connections, storm sewer, storm sewer pipe. In place, lighting improvements is the streetlights, rather than. Through taking improvements, what I will know there is we have included the map, based on some preliminary outcomes from the. Fundments are changed after our last year meeting. More specific will happen on that piece to further refine what's in the. A cost incorporated from this point. Then we see the next, the three add-on improvements. Finally, for a construction cost of the box is twenty five million. With ghetto, estimated project cost for about three point two million dollars. Funding for this, the city were successful in to make a grant from the. At the amount of one point two five million dollars, that was a very significant difference project. We have project funding in the county, but in the month of twenty twenty thousand. And so then the remaining will be financed with support from either your children's or your enterprise fund. But some of them. Last piece is also the assessment, because of concern for the. So assessment for this project will be based on our existing, your policy. I remember yours, the policy goes at different classes of the unit. This is the construction project, we consider a class improvement by the policy. Within the class, there are few components to be assessable. Your street, which includes street and storm sewer, audio water and drainage sewer. And they are based on a per unit assessment to determine the properties. Then the policy, it said your street assessment, which again, the street and storm is based on twenty percent of the assessable cost. When we talk about the assessable cost, we need to take one hundred percent of what you saw in the surface and the materials and chart of this. What we look at is that the main assess based on a non, like the non, non actual street, which just is. So we use that amount as I think we will go, follow the individual's capabilities.
So I have a question, so on residential, single family home residential street. I think your, your assessment is largely based on your frontage to the street. Downtown, we have some, some buildings, they have a frontage on the street, but there are several residences inside the building.
It's only unit back.
Come on. Okay, it's coming up.
Yeah.
You guys are.
All right, so.
I'll watch who you're.
That is your single family residential lot. That is considered one E R U. Multi-family and non-residential properties are adjusted based on the formal policy. The majority of these properties are non-residential, and so essentially what that formula says. The first iteration is if it's a hundred and twenty, linear coverage or less, it's considered one limit. So the majority of the properties on this project, if that, that one, we have, single family. We can have that are marketing, that are.
So if you have, if you live in a building, let's say there's several units in a building. But you have less than a hundred and twenty feet of a frontage.
Can you get a portion of that?
You're gonna get, you're gonna get one, one area. One area, you're divided by. And you, and it'd be divided by the number of residents, isn't it?
Well, yeah, so most, the majority of these properties are right, these are commercial ones, they have one tax.
No, some of them have.
No, I don't, so the majority of them are, except there are, we have one singular building. That were developed into, let's say, a whole residential, most of the units, so that one.
And that's where Dave's concern comes in, is I live in the country. You know, that he lives, probably have eight units. Six.
I think seven.
All right, seven.
I think it's in our.
So it's not just. That long, you divided by seven.
One area.
Because you're in, we got a. And Bill was here, and Bill was satisfied with what he heard too. So let's, let's just continue on now, if you want, that's all we want.
So we have somewhere we did for the quarter, we have a few things to confirm, but we have about seventy five. E R U units throughout the corridor. And so then what we'll be for estimated assessments is we came up with one point six seven zero five. Seven million, so like, for the assessable cost, we talk about that amount. We take twenty percent of that cost for the assessments, and the other eighty percent is borrowed by. We use the rates of tax.
Hey, one more question, what about people who live on a corner?
That comes up too.
So part of that's based in the policy.
On one side.
And if they've been assessed prior, in a period of time, they're not assessed at all. Little bit, yeah.
So for the streets, we've got a total could be assessed at two hundred and fifty seven, we invite that five, we have twenty seven. So that works out to be four thousand four hundred fifty nine dollars per E R U. When we apply that to our assumed E R U structure corridor. We get individual assessment range from five hundred fifty seven, which is the more owned kind of units. To five thousand five hundred and seventy three, we'll tell you the majority of the properties in the corridor. Or are like four thousand four hundred fifty nine. Actually, that's all in the category that started that.
That took that range up.
And this is for street improvements.
This is for the street components of these. Now, with the utilities, anyways, we talked about the three components, we have a water component, we have sewer. The process of the improvements are based on a per unit basis. But it's determined by the city council. The assessment is based on being actually used to be replaced. So when we look at that, we have estimated sixty six minutes. And some of our work last week will play into becoming actually minutes of our other. But for sewer, at eight hundred eighty seven thousand roughly in cost, twenty percent of that, and then maybe eighty percent more by city of large. We have a hundred and seventy seven thousand, four hundred and seventy dollars to be assessed, divided by sixty six minutes. Which gives us to two thousand six hundred and eighty nine dollars per E R U. Similarly, on the water, we have two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars, we have between twenty percent of that. A hundred eighty percent more by the engine public. We have hundreds of eight thousand, five hundred and two that will be assessed by like sixty six minutes. So that comes to two thousand five hundred. So between the individual assessment, we need six hundred and fifty five. So for total, when we go ahead of, this chart shows you the maximum E R U assessments. With the higher end right now is two thousand seven hundred and nine dollars. When we play that into the individual assessment ranges, we have one thousand two hundred twelve dollars to ten hundred and six dollars. That's single E R U property, like that one. Noting back to the previous assessments, I don't know that there are little more properties that may have been completed in the project. They may have been assessed for streets, they may have been assessed for sewer or hole. So in those cases, they will not have any. What they may be, say they were assessed for street project in the, in the, they potentially will still be in the super connection. So we'll work through those details, follow the head. What I will know too is that this rate is comparable to other assessments that from other communities or local construction. Where we want to go, we've had a number of projects in the past, these assessments. And I think some of these are, are different from this child, those projects from the generally running projects. Or the sewer lining project that was going to be used to build them, so. Generally, this is a much. Rather improvement project. So this is comparable to books you need to use. So I've got a process.
You're never.
So at the end of the day, we have to prove that those improvements are necessary, the cost of that. We will, how we're asking you tonight to receive the feasibility setting, the masterment of the proof, and you're just receiving what we presented. And calling for that public hearing. You hold your agreement hearing, and next meeting is September sixth. You take that public testimony, and then if you select one of the project, one of the. You're presented in the feasibility study, or if you're properly, that I need to access.
Thank you, Katie. Any questions for Katie, otherwise we have, yeah, go ahead, Dean.
All right, so let's fill some rooms. Here, one on the port header room. There's, so right now, we're at eight one one nine dollars. A project. That's not included, the one point two nine that we got from state.
So, so would you give any?
Take one point two off.
And that's all whole, uh, not including the four fifty.
From the county.
County.
So you take eight point, whatever, subtract the one point, six in state, subtract.
The high number up there is the high number right now, from what we're gonna be seeing. Uh, there's not gonna be any thirty thousand dollar, uh, assessment unless the product will tenfold, which is that one, correct?
Correct.
There are a couple unusual properties that are multiple ERUs. If you walk down the street, you can see if it's yours or not.
We presented, you know, based on the current estimates.
We, we saw the numbers out there. If you go back to this. Yeah. What's the state of, all right, what's the state of the bottom, for total number? And the rate?
I, I don't really use the nine thousand seven hundred and one.
That's, that's a high. And then.
Let me, this is based on today, the actual assessment will be, when they're assessable, based on construction cost.
Obviously, yeah. I'm saying today. So there's no thirty thousand dollars. Uh, uh, the six hundred forty thousand dollars that we have in our review, that's assessment. And that's for the adjacent property owners. Um, but the adjacent property owners are not going to be one hour, kind of, of the possible. We, we know that, but the rumors out there that they will, um, I just wanna squash them right there.
Right, right. The only thing, so what we calculated, um, you know, with this, this, one percent. And we're, we're, we're like, that's, that's the whole, uh, on the streets. We're, we adjusted the, the public cost down to a local level and we take twenty percent of that. So remaining cost again, I don't know if I can see this out.
And the other thing on our thought is, if your property is on Main Street and your sewer and water comes from the back alleyway. You're not gonna be assessed sewer and water, because that come from that property. It already is in the back alleyway.
Unless it makes sense to correct that.
Well, this is the sewer.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
We don't may have one, we didn't help them in that, but that's what we're doing right now. So when people question, is this sewer helping and not helping to save the, you know, how it's established?
But people have to realize that if, if it's not in the project, then we won't be charged. Uh, because there's rumor all over that, no matter what, if you're, uh, have blockway, you're gonna be charged for sewer and water, about, and you're not one. And, uh, I'm done with whatever. I just wanna finish.
I got a quick design question. Is there some reason Main Street is not gonna be open, including going down to the Anderson House? It seemed like we're losing potential to add a whole lot of diagonal parking on either side of the street down, um, you know, businesses and stuff. Is there some reason for that?
I, I guess I didn't hear that ever from the start.
No, that's an interesting fact, though. There was something else that didn't come up in the streetscape conversation either that, to the.
I mean, it seems kind of crazy, you're, you're doing the whole street, you're still doing that one street wide, you know, and it's gonna go narrow. What's the point of that? You could have diagonal parking and add, you know, on both sides of the street, significant downtown parking.
Might be parked at ten feet from front doors, houses above.
Right.
Well, there's only two houses, two houses there.
Yeah.
It's a wide boulevard, you could, you could.
I'm just, just asking. You know, it's gonna find a, but no park.
Any other questions for Katie? I'll just personalize it for myself. We're a business owner, and I think, I see that number, that top over one ERU, I see ten thousand dollars. And I estimate the bid's gonna come in high, factor that it might be fifteen thousand over ten years, it's a fifteen hundred dollar, uh, cost to the total reconstruction of the street sidewalks and all my utilities. That's, that's kind of how I'm framing it. Um, from a residential standpoint, we were brand new to town, got kind of surprised by the street project in twenty thirteen. But I'm pretty sure it was about thirty six hundred for just Main Street, with no streetscape improve, you know, no streetscape improvements, no sidewalk improvements. So I am actually looking at these street numbers as being pretty good, which as a project manager makes me think they're gonna come in higher than that. But whatever, it's, it seems in line with, you know, recent assessments. Um, we're following the same policy as recent assessments. It's just complicated, I think, because it's, there's a lot more features involved. This is a total reconstruction, this is not an overlay, as you articulated. But, and you're right, it's absolutely old infrastructure that I think we absolutely have to tend to. So not gonna work for us for another hundred years. And, and if there's questions about how the eighty percent side of it happened, it's not all taxes either. Um, we'll, we'll get to that, but as, as Caroline enumerated in her administrator's report, we're, we're, we're working with the assumption that we'll be working with very low interest lending. Fingers crossed we can get that, because that was always a part of the plan, but that's something the city will deliberate as we do our long-term, uh, financial strategic planning. So the eighty, the other eighty percent doesn't come from taxes.
Maybe the legislature will get together and pass a law.
That's what you can call your legislator about tonight, when you get home, because we're gonna do this, we're gonna urge that. And we don't know if it's fruitful at all, but that's exactly the pressure that you've been urged to place on our legislators, so. All right, any other questions? Otherwise, we can entertain a motion to, uh, what's the term? To, uh, receive the feasibility study. Did you say moved, Dean, second by Jeff? I thought you were just cheering with her. All right, you have a motion, a second, any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Katie, thank you. It really does help to hear this multiple times, because I'm able to sort of use the terminology that's used in the report better than I was last time, so thanks. And of course, if you didn't notice, there's other open, there's other public meetings planned as a part of this process. Our public hearing will be September, it was, six, September sixth will be the public hearing on this next portion.
We encourage, if any property has any questions, we will.
Right. Absolutely. If you're listening to this on YouTube, it is much easier to talk to the project team than it is to your council members about these particular details. Although you can always reach out to us, even if you're just reaching out to us to get the contact with the project team, that's just fine.
You can find their information on Facebook.
Right. Thank you. All right, thanks, Katie. And then we are on to general business. Ten three, which is related sort of to this. Um, we have had some participation of council members in the streetscape element, um, conversation. We're looking at some of the elements, like lighting, et cetera. Um, lighting, as you probably noticed, is a big, a big item, a big price item in this project, so we take that very seriously. Um, so we need to decide whether or not you want, um, let's see. We want some group, right now, it's, because it's based on volunteerism, it's me, Craig, and, and Dean, who sit on that streetscape steering committee. We need to decide whether we want this ad hoc group to actually be able to recommend which elements are included in the final ordering plans and specifications to get to those budget numbers.
So the, there's a large steering committee that's in meeting, but ultimately, this group is gonna vote on how much the project's gonna cost. So it seemed appropriate to potentially take, you know, just council members from that group and say, of all the various streetscape elements that were recommended. What do we want to include in the final ordering plans and specifications? And then the rest, the recommendations that come out of that plan, because I can see some faces that have been involved in that process, would be going into a long-term plan for the city of Wabashaw with potentially phasing. But if you can't tell, I am serious about plans, so I don't want anything in a plan that you don't want me to be spending time on. So I, I, one of my criticisms are, I hear is, why do we do plans if we don't follow them? I follow plans. So I just wanna just put that out there, just because it's not getting done as part of the project, it means staff are authorized with time, energy, and resources about making those things happen. So, um, the other thing is, you could continue to let the large group do it, but I think there's about fifteen to sixteen individuals. And sometimes it's really hard to get in the nuances of what do we want to include in our final, so.
I think the other elements that play in the streetscape larger presentation, which is wonderful, because there's all sorts of people involved, is that, you know, when people aren't having to actually think about financing this, they want everything, right? So do I, as a citizen, and somebody else has to worry about how it gets financed. But we're gonna have to get serious about what parts of this are within the scope and what parts of this are part of the longer plan, and how does that play out? So if we choose a particular lighting element for this project, because it makes sense for this very particular scope, how does that affect lighting decisions down the road in terms of districts that are related to this? Um, Paul Mink has done a nice job kind of outlining how other aspects of the, of the city are related to this commercial core. So I'm certainly still willing to do that, I'm thinking about it all the time. It's, you know, again, we have a business there, but I also think from a long-term planning process, I like to get to a hearing stakeholders say what they want, long-term. It can't all happen in this project, we'll have to be decisive about what fits and then what has to get articulated in a further planning document.
Does, does the full city council, should the full city council approve these costs? I mean.
Yes.
For the street, you guys can come up with recommendations, but we would have to approve that.
It's just what gets included, and then, then council has the option.
It's just, I think they've got a pretty big scope identified, ranging from a total redoing of Heritage Park, which we anticipate wouldn't be part of the project. So it's just a, what's to pull out for a recommendation? And then you can certainly still reject those items and say, we don't want to do them. What I will say is, if you think you are, be passionate about something that these three wouldn't select, you wouldn't get to preview what they've gone ahead and eliminated as an item.
Unless you call me and we can look at it together, because I, I think it is good for us to all see that, that those, the streetscape sort of options, which didn't just come from the, what are we calling ourselves? The streetscape convening, they also came from public survey.
Otherwise, we could discuss it at the council, but I didn't look at you, Katie, but I guess the other option would be to bring the whole big plan, everybody, and say, and try to have a big meeting, it just.
I would surge that with a loud voice, just because a lot of time has gone into it already.
Yeah.
I, I think what we're, um, part of the discussion that I think such a much, meaning driven, we're, 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 we have, and that's evaluation of those elements done. I had that, and even that recognition, or was a whole discussion that then, we'll still break the whole streetscape, streetscape man to the council as a whole for, uh, review and adoption. I think that's just, that's gonna happen, uh, how we, our timeframe, and so trying to work with the confines of this project. And we get those down in the, or, or that recognition, um, or, or, I, I mentioned that not, I, I, right now, the project's sold. So what fits in there, do we need to adjust that?
I support the ad hoc. I think it's a lot easier to get some of the three people to agree on, eliminate the eight of us. So, uh, as long as we have final say in it, as council, I, I move to have the ad hoc.
And our Craig and Dean book will end the continuous serve of that capacity.
Yeah, well, we're trying to be there in the morning.
You got it. All right, so that's all the direction we need, right? We need a motion on that. All right, and now we are to our, um, C J C lease update. There's been a lot of work on this, I'm sure you read Colin's summary of the issue, you want to take us through the highlights? You can discuss it.
Yeah, um, so we are in discussions with the county lease, the county, Wabashaw County, that they want to increase the lease term amounts for the city of Wabashaw. Um, and we, we did do, Michael and I did do some sort of trying to negotiate this, um, and presenting a few options. And the, the options we negotiated, which were another dollar square foot or, and then until we reach, um, I think the magic number, fourteen dollars a square foot. And then just increasing it by the rate of inflation was ultimately rejected. And then there was a big meeting, um, a few Tuesdays ago. And so what I have in the, um, packet was just kind of the data that's being presented to Wabashaw County with where they're coming up with wanting to in, well, or looking at other data to try to say, we want to increase the rates, but to what? And the main area is, um, the county leases space to the Department of Corrections. And they pay about fourteen dollars a square foot, although they're leasing less space. Um, what is the argument that several of us made at their last meeting was considering the partnership we have? We have a shared administrative assistant. Um, we, we share, uh, training, uh, backup for, for Wabashaw County Sheriff Department with the jail. So I think the partnership was very well explained by Jane Glander, who's here, um, because Joe was on vacation. And their response, and you can read it in the paper, was, well, yeah, that's great, but there's still inflation, you know? So that was, um, in their minds. So kind of as I summarize it, I think it's not, I think we can continue to make an argument, but it's kind of one of those cases where we're making, um, an argument, that they have a completely different opinion. And Joe and I have gone over it, they're not, they're not hearing kind of our, I think we've made a lot of efforts in many ways, and I don't think they're hearing us, so.
How good is that point two five, hope I'm playing.
So we've talked about this, I mean, one thing that we are getting in return, we provide the point three fives, uh, the, the assistance, F T A, which provides administrative support for the Wabashaw Sheriff. And the Wabashaw Sheriff Department has been with us explaining, they really value that partnership, and they've shared that with the county officials.
They're collecting revenue on behalf of the county, et cetera.
Yes, yeah. Um, on the other hand, the Wabashaw County would argue, um, that they're providing us I T services. So right now, all the officers, uh, do receive I T support from Wabashaw County. They have Wabashaw County emails, they use Wabashaw County internet. Um, and then Wabashaw County was great in helping Joe get set up this year. Now, we still, you know, think that the value of our administrative assistant is more than those I T services. But again, I think I've tried to make that argument, and it wasn't, wasn't heard. Um, so, I don't know, does that?
I'll be, I'll be really honest with you, and I really appreciate, I almost want to invite Jane to speak, although she probably is tired of talking about this. I really appreciate the support we received from law enforcement, from our primary, Jane was there to speak. I think that this is a little bit like when we come to our budget year of end, and it's like, we just gotta squeeze money out of somewhere. And I don't think that they really want to hear a whole lot more about what we value, or what we see as the actual monetary aspect of that particular personnel. That frustrates me. I asked them to please talk to us in a partner fashion, but it feels like, well, I think we should get about, I, I think we should get this equal to C J C and act, well, I think that we should get more. I think we should get twice that, well, I think we should get a thousand. So it feels like a very, we, we get like this, guys, we do, we get very arbitrary when it comes down to money. This is a very small revenue, and my question to them, and I, I'd ask this openly, is if, if the police aren't their tenants, who's gonna be their tenant, sitting side by side with the sheriff's department? So I don't know, I, I, I just, I, I want to believe that they, that they're well-intended, and they're trying, they're watching their budget, just like we will have to, they're facing real inflationary pressure, just like we will have to. They haven't actually thought through, there's revenue at all, you know, I mean, who's the other tenant that's in competition with us? So it's been hard for me to figure out, how do we get to an actual negotiating conversation? Because I feel like.
I think we need to come up with a price.
Yeah, and I think that, that is where we have, that is where we have to provide our best argument as to what that is. I still think we may be not, a rather arbitrary response.
We didn't present a price, at least.
We thought that we had, because the work, the work prior.
Well, you left it, you left it up to the commissioners to decide.
Well, it is up to the commissioners to decide.
Well, they're, they're gonna decide in their favor, so I think we need to say, here's what we really think is a fair price, per square foot for this, and this is it, and.
But in case anybody was there, heard that meeting, and it was sort of the, the chair sort of referenced, why can't you get, just to get this out, this is a small problem? That effort did happen, that effort did happen. So.
The one commissioner, is it Brian? He kept saying, well, it's only four thousand dollars, because we're going from eight thousand to his twelve thousand. So it's only four thousand dollars, well, they've got a lot bigger budget than us, so four thousand dollars is, is more easily absorbed in their budget than it is in ours.
So that's what I have.
We disagree that.
Yeah, sort of in front of you is, um, the twelve, the, the options presented on the, at the meeting that we were at, that they could go higher were, um, an annual cost going from where we're at, about eight thousand dollars a year to twelve thousand a year. That's the four thousand dollars. That's about four thousand dollars, and a monthly cost of going from six hundred dollars a month to a thousand dollar a month, that was the reference. Um, and then the two dollars a square foot, that's what the yearly cost was, and then that would build up over time. Those were the two proposals out there. Um, other information that was presented was perhaps Wyndham Police, which we haven't, we don't know what the square footage or whatever, but they are paying, you know, upwards of twenty three, four a year. Um, and this seems particularly high, but I guess the D A C is leasing the middle school for almost twenty five thousand a year. And then they also lease space to the Soil Conservation District, and that's about eleven thousand a year.
I think we should just say, well, come up with a figure, and I, I'd say, be in the middle, ten thousand. We can go to ten thousand, but we're meeting in the middle and see where that gets us. Because otherwise, they're at, we're at their, they have.
Because otherwise, they're at, we're at their, they have all the cards. They can, they can either kick us, they can either charge us twelve thousand dollars, and we don't pay to kick us out. We don't have any real cards to play, do we? Other than the fact that we're providing point three five.
Yeah, that's material to me.
Yeah, that is a, you know, if it's just a point three five, we don't get anything back for it, then we really, we're losing. But if we're getting some IT services back and, you know, it's not a wash, but I think the FTD is more than the IT service.
Is there some reason we can't provide the IT services here?
Well, so we would have to, I think, run our own internet out there. I don't even know how it works. We just.
It was done that way because it makes sense, is my.
Yeah, it, it just be.
So we, so we pay that extra thousand dollars for IT services, we increased that in a contract?
Yeah.
I didn't hear you mention that.
Right.
No, that's a good point.
Okay.
It was, that was addressed in a twenty eighteen amendment to the agreement. The twenty thirteen agreement didn't have that additional one thousand dollars for IT that was added in twenty eighteen. So in those years since, we have been paying for IT services.
Yeah, that's a good point.
Some of those people didn't even, or Tony Ward didn't even realize this agreement really started in twenty thirteen. They kept at twenty eighteen, forgetting the agreement we had back in thirteen. But truly, there was no getting through to a couple of, um.
Well, there were, there were two, there was two bolts there that we could have, we could have made a deal with, two of them.
Absolutely, there were, yeah.
So all we need is a fair commission, we can have a deal. But that's why I think we should just come forward with a figure that seems reasonable. And uh see what we can.
So you're starting to drop, well, for any further comment, you were starting to make references to terms, correct?
Yeah, I think ten thousand a year is, is a, is a fair offer.
Yeah, what we can do is ask. I mean, it, I wish the spirit of it was more of the partnership and.
Yeah.
We pay them a nominal fee to just make this happen, but in the grand scheme of things, you're not gonna rent somewhere for a thousand bucks a month and get what we get, even close to what we get, and we're at their mercy. So I say we just make the offer and say, this is what we feel appropriate, and if they say no, then.
Yeah, I agree.
We pay the extra money and, and we move on.
We move, because, yeah, it's not that big of a deal. But it's, it's nice, we can cooperate, have a.
I'm gonna keep asking, I'm gonna keep asking that of our commissioners. I mean, I think we have that, we have that representation for Wauwashaw. I think that's perfectly reasonable to keep asking that. And, and then we have to keep thinking that way, too. And we, we sort of surprise them, I think, with an, speaking of assessments, with their decision on the assessment that they were expecting was gonna be waived. So I think if we ask the spirit of partnership, I mean, we've got to be really mindful that we're thinking that with two when county.
Yeah, I think Mike Wabius supports this.
Yes, yes, yeah, he's been at the table through all the discussions and, and also asking the question, the board, what, what are you looking for? So that gave us at least something to work with. Do we have a motion uh related to the terms Kragas outlined?
I'll make the motion.
Okay, motion to.
Say ten thousand a year.
Okay, the motion is second. Any further discussion? Here none? All those in favor say aye. Aye, opposed, same sign. All right, thanks. Thanks to the administration, again, everybody who's been, this development, who's experienced in the past, for standing up for this issue, trying to explain it. You know, it's, it's maybe beyond everybody's institutional memory, or they weren't even there when it happened, but some were. So I was hoping some memory would be jogged. Um and thanks to the county staff to do that same help. All right, then we have, oops, I was gonna ask for correction from Brian before I read the resolution on the donations. Um this be missing and yes? I'm gonna go with that. This is such a.
I would think so. I don't know that, though. That's not.
So I just want to read the wonderful donations, and then we can have a resolution accepting them. Um to the library, four hundred dollars in memory of Glenn Collier from my family and friends. Uh twenty dollars in memory of Glenn from Mike and Deb Smith, two hundred and fifty dollars for Minnesota author Frank Weber program in September from Brenda Pearson and Happy Girl Brewing, thanks Brenda. And to Veterans Park, one thousand dollars to the American Legion Post fifty in memory of William Reister by Margaret Reister. It says Andrew, Andrew, and I think it's Anderson. We have a motion to approve the donations.
Oh, sir.
We have a motion from Brian, second from Tim. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All right, and we have any other announcements to be brought back here? Oh, yes, we do. Very important, very important announcements. Um we should have gotten your financials emailed to you. I saw them from Tyler earlier today, I think, or yesterday. Um and then we have the budget workshop for twenty twenty-three on Tuesday, August twenty-third at three P M at the library. And then our long-term Wauwashaw capital plan workshop is Monday of twenty-sixth, September from four, at four o'clock here at City Hall. Any other announcements, or we could entertain a motion to adjourn?
I move to adjourn.
Thanks to all the staff for their wonderful anniversaries. We have a motion to adjourn second.
Second.
The second from Craig. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, everybody. Long meeting. Thanks to the public for staying.